Good to go.
Okay, how many?
We have one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight people, so we have a majority here. And...
Okay, everyone, welcome, for those of you that are here thus far. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 13 caucus of Albany Common Council. While we don't have a lot on the agenda, we do have a lot of things to discuss this meeting. So I'll just start and get us through the agenda and then we'll discuss some things after that. So following, and for the record, I can't see who's all here. Let's see, Ms. Farrell, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Hohwe, Ms. Fahy, Ms. Love, Mr. Igo, Mr. Conti, Ms. Frederick, Mr. Ballerin. Mr. Robinson mentioned that he'd be running a little bit late. Legislative, excuse me, legislative, Michelle Andre, research council, JR Pachardo, and Danielle Gillespie of City Cook, as well as Brett Williams from Corporation Council. I think I got everyone, right? Okay. So someone's breaking up and it's... I said, Ms. Fahy, you're probably... Oh, I'm sorry, President Ellis also.
Kelly, I'll go through who's here so far. So we have Councilwoman Fahy, Councilwoman Doche, Councilmember Kimbrough, Councilmember Ballerin, Council President Corey Ellis, Majority Leader Farrell, Councilmember Igo, Councilmember Love, Councilmember O'Brien, Councilmember Anani, Councilmember Conti, Councilmember Frederick, and Councilmember Hohwe.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so just jumping right into the agenda. We don't have public hearings. No minutes from the last meeting. I didn't get to it. Consideration of vetoes. Now, do we, JR, we go through the process from the last meeting? Or wait till we get to the ordinance in question?
We do have a local law before we get to vetoes?
Yes, we do have a local law before we do the vetoes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Frederick's local law, okay. All right, I was just running down the front. So, okay, now onto the local law section. I was just reading the front of the agenda. Number three on the agenda is Ms. Frederick's local law F. It will be voted on pending the outcome of the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow night. Okay, so that was number three. Further along into ordinances held, the number nine and 10, which are Ms. Love's. Again, they are in the Finance Committee and will be moved pending the outcome of that meeting tomorrow evening. That was nine and 10 on the agenda. And next on to resolutions introduced by Mr. Anani. Forty-four, fifty-two, twenty. Someone saying something? They're coughing or dog? No, okay, so Mr. Anani. Is he in yet?
He's in. He was unmuted, hold on. Anani?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, we can't.
Yeah, this legislation is calling on the governor and the state legislature to classify the deaths of all municipal employees who died from COVID-19 as line of duty deaths. This designation is typically reserved for... Can you put everybody on mute? Because it's like making a lot of noise, I don't know. This designation is reserved for workers who were injured or died during their job. These are typically designated for like police officers in a crime scene where they're shot or a firefighter who was like lost in a burning building. The value of this benefit is through various city agencies, is awarded by individuals' pension board. When the state of the emergency was announced, not every municipal employee had the luxury of working from home. Line of duty benefit would grant a survivor spouse the lifetime pension of deceased partner. If, on the other hand, COVID-19 is deemed a natural cost, a one-time insurance payout worth a fraction of that amount would be given. During this pandemic, many city employees were designated as essential and they didn't have the luxury of staying home. And I believe that we have an obligation to make sure that these workers who are putting their lives on the line, who are putting their health on the line, are fully supported. Dealing with the coronavirus is stressful in itself and people shouldn't be worried about their family being taken care of in case of a tragic incident taking place. I think about myself personally, sometimes when I go out, I think about the risk that I'm putting myself. So, and I don't go out as much. And can you imagine some of these essential workers in our city, like police, firefighters who are going out on a consistent basis, the amount of stress and pressure they're under? Currently, in our state, we have over 300,000 confirmed COVID-19 cases, 20,000 confirmed deaths as of 2020, which is roughly one-third of all coronavirus cases in the United States. I think this is a step in the right direction to show appreciation for our essential workers in the city and to designate everyone as a line of duty worker within our city. Thank you.
So the intent is that this would apply to every city employee regardless of whether they were essential and working or whether they were stay at home and not working?
Yes, every municipal worker. Again, the coronavirus has been around from the CDC. It shows that since December of 2019. So we don't know when the individual contracted it. And I think that to designate everyone as a frontline worker, this designation...
Yeah, you don't know whether it was an occupational hazard or not because there are differences in terms of by employee, but...
Yeah, this will apply for everyone, every municipal worker. And this is a measure that's being taken by several municipalities all across our state urging the governor and also the legislature to act on this issue. A couple of weeks ago, someone asked me, what could we do if the state legislature or the governor doesn't take action immediately? And I did some research and I found out that the mayor actually could make an executive order which will grant widows the continued health benefit until the state legislature acts.
Typically, the bills like this that pass the legislature that grant additional benefits to certain classes of employees, usually in the police and fire area, relate back to a work-related injury? And this does not do that?
Well, the thing is that we're not sure when the individual...
And many of those bills do also get vetoed because of the huge expense.
Repeat that again, sorry about that.
Many of those bills do get vetoed because of the huge expense.
Okay.
I'm just saying it's very broad.
Yes, because...
It is.
And again, what he's saying is...
Okay.
You contracted at home. When you say every employer, every employee, that means everybody works for the city of Albany. Whether they contracted at work or at home, you're saying they should be paid those benefits. When normally, when something like this happens, it's normally because they contracted it while doing their job.
Gotcha. So I understand what you're saying. Right now, I am in favor of just making it for everyone in the city. The reason why is that we're not sure if an individual contracted the COVID during, before the state of emergency was offered and then later on find out that they're ill or have a fatal health problem. So what I'm saying is that by sending this resolution, asking the governor and also the legislature to classify these deaths of all employees is a step in the right direction to show our employees and also our municipal workers that we support them and that if they are... This is just a barrier that they don't have to worry about in case of a tragic incident was to happen.
Also, would you consider having the term of essential worker put in there? Because if somebody's working from home every day and, you know, they pick it up by going, picking up their mail or, you know, I would like to see essential somehow put into the language.
I'm open to that.
And I think it's really broad in the case of a police or a fireman or other essential workers or frontline workers. So this is essentially saying if you're a municipal worker and you have it, you get covered. It's line of duty. We can't, and it's really, really broad, using Tom's example. That's a lot of folks to cover. So for me, the problem is all municipal employees. The circumstances matter on how they contracted it.
One of the things the Daily News reported, there was something that the Daily News reported is because of the way COVID-19 is contracted and that you don't really see symptoms for a while or don't even know if you really had it, there was an issue where there was a Rikers Island police officer who died from COVID. But because of the way the pension laws are currently written, you have to affirmatively prove that you got it as a result of work. But it's hard when it's, it's hard to prove that when the timing of the infection is so big now.
Can I?
I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Alfredo.
I was gonna say, I spoke to JR about the letter that I spoke about at the last meeting about having, trying to get something like this for all essential workers, not just municipal, but it would be a federal, it'd be a much bigger task. But I think this is a great first step and this is something that we can do here, you know, at our level. You know, if we can, you know, ask the mayor that all of our essential workers be given benefits, I think that's a first step. And when I'm looking at essential, I'm looking at our police, I'm looking at our fire department, I'm looking at our water department. Yes?
Alfredo, you understand, we can't give people pension benefits, only the state legislature can do that.
Only the state, yeah, the comptroller's office.
I just...
Why is it that other city officials, I know in New York City, other city officials are asking the mayor in New York City to...
New York City has their own pension system.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
And also, the mayor could just have an executive order to help give a... If there's a situation that this was to occur, the mayor could make an executive order to give the individual family a benefit.
So I just wanted to point out that another thing with this resolution is it calls on the governor and the state legislature to have a bill to do this. So I think a lot of these details that we're talking about, they would actually look at on the state level. I mean, I don't know that Councilmember Anani or Flynn are suggesting that we craft the language that would work on a state level. It's highly likely that the legislature themselves would look at that. So I think it's more about the intent of saying this is an important thing and we want, like, this is something we as a city support and we would like to see this happen at the state level. But the actual language, what it would look like, and Richard's absolutely right, a lot of these bills do get vetoed because of costs. But, you know, there's, I think that the intent is the important thing and it allows the legislature to kind of worry about the details of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are tricky bills.
Yeah, and Richard, I just want to be very clear about something. Just because something has an opportunity to be vetoed doesn't mean that we shouldn't encourage it or we shouldn't support it. I understand that...
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not, you know...
No, no, I know you're not saying that, but I just want to make it very clear because when you say veto, sometimes it intimidates certain council members.
No, I mean, there is a cost. I remember one bill that was very controversial was to make death by HIV a kind of an occupational exposure, a kind of a, you know, an occupational hazard. And it was very, it wasn't based on the science. And it just said if a, you know, correctional office, public safety officer died as a result of HIV or AIDS, that was automatically assumed that it was occupational.
And again, for the city of Albany, there's no fiscal implication as relates to my resolution.
There is, there is a fiscal.
The implication, because we pay the increased pension costs.
Gotcha.
Or health benefits.
I...
Councilwoman Dush, they had her hand up.
So generally, generally, you would put some sort of time limit when you're construing benefits on it. I understand that you're basically saying, leave it to the legislature to make that kind of determination. But I share the concerns about, I want to say, the concerns about it being overly broad. And I think that when we pass a resolution, we do have an obligation to show some level of responsibility with regard to what we're asking. I want to note that there are many essential employees who have little to no reason to work outside of their homes as well. So the risk to them is also minimal, you know, associated with the job. So I would prefer to see something, any essential employees who are required to work outside of their home as part of this. With regard to the onset, I think that it is stretching it to suggest that somebody is now going to pass away from COVID-19 that they acquired back in January or February before we started having people self-isolate, et cetera.
Yeah, I disagree with that, but okay.
What?
I said I disagree with that. If you look at some of the studies, okay.
You do have evidence, there are studies that show that people have died from having contracted it back in, you know...
The thing is that we don't know and we have seen studies come out every single day as new reports and new revelations. There are individuals who might contract it in January and they might be fine for the first month or so, but then it might come back again. So this is just a protection for municipal workers.
I am wondering if it's appropriate to refer this to committee for looking at this a little bit more carefully, but, you know, I would prefer to see some sort of amendment to this to narrow the scope.
I agree. Mr. Anani, would you, about an intro and then you kind of work on it? Rework it and we can take it up at next caucus? Or we can do the community thing? Probably be easier to, for you to, because as it is, I don't, I don't support it this way and it seems like there are a few other members that don't.
Yeah, I'm open to amendments. But one of the biggest amendments that I'm hearing is that to, instead of making it all municipal workers, to essentially change that language to essential workers who are working outside right now.
But you just told Tom that you were open to that.
Say it again?
You just told Tom you were open to that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm just repeating, make it clear to everyone. That's the correction that you guys want to see, that everybody wants to see.
Councilmember Ballerin has his hand up next.
And DJ.
And Ben, and right after.
I think we've been very fortunate that we haven't had any of our essential workers have. You know, we've had several of our, you know, staff in the water department, firefighters, police officers that have gotten this disease. I think doing what we can to let them all know that if the worst were to happen, we've asked you to be outside of your home. And I do think it should be for those essential workers that are outside their homes. Because if it's against to stay at home and be safe and work from the desk, the same risk that the other staff that were asking to be out there to fill the potholes, to pick up the trash, to police our streets, to take care of our fires, to make sure the water still runs on our faucets, you know, we ask them to put a risk for themselves and their families. So we should be ready to take the expense of taking care of their families if the ultimate sacrifice. So I, I, I support this. Whatever we gotta do to fix the language to make it so that people feel more comfortable, but not watered down, because I understand there will be a fiscal responsibility with this. But we ask these men and women to go out there, risk their lives and risk their family's lives and their family's health. We owe it to them to make sure we have their families back if the worst comes. Again, we are fortunate, we are. The city has not been that fortunate. They've lost several police officers, they've lost other municipal workers. We have been fortunate and we continue to be fortunate. And I hope we never use this type of resolution. But wanting for people to know that we have their back if this does happen.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, I just wanted to add, I think that it's important to show a commitment to the people that are on the front line. But also, I don't want to just rush into doing stuff. You know, a lot of times we rush into doing stuff because somebody else in some part of the state is doing something. And, you know, the history of Albany, we've been in front of a lot of things. And I think that at this time, we're learning. You know, each two weeks, we learn something different about what's going on. And sometimes to be out in front is safe and is noble. But sometimes to slow it down and take our time and make sure we do it right is equally as important. So I'm not saying that I couldn't support this, but it has been a lot of questions that, you know, make you say, hmm. Because if you think about the World Trade Center, they had a lot of people who were filing false claims and things like that. And we just have to be mindful of this. It'd be real hard to prove that somebody got it from somewhere and it'd be hard for the city to prove that they didn't get it from somewhere. So I think that we should let science work and just be a little bit more responsible from this instead of rushing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Was there anyone else?
Yeah, and also too, I just want to add something. I know everyone wants to talk about the essential workers and which is, it is important. But let's put a scenario, God forbid, where Michelle actually has to go to City Hall and contract it. If, what happens to her family in this instance is that we're going to make sure that it will be categorized instead of the family having to prove that the disease was contracted while on work, it would automatically make her designate for, under this resolution, as a line of duty death. So just sometimes, I know we want to focus on essential workers, but there are still some individuals who work for the city of Albany that still have to go to City Hall on a consistent basis. I mean, we all went to City Hall to pick up some letters to give to our constituents. I mean, there are still people that have to, that are still working currently that is not designated as essential working. So I just want to throw that idea and put that in the back of individuals' minds as it relates to this resolution. And the cost of, the most of this cost burden is going to be put on the state with the state pension system, not in the city of Albany.
Just to note, your language is contradictory because it seems to reference the issue is really frontline workers that have occupational responsibilities that preclude them from working from home. And then later, then you say, but let's apply it to everybody. So there's contradictory language in here.
Sounds good. I'm open to making amendments and Kelly?
Yeah, so you can intro and hold it for your amendments or you can just hold it until you amend it and introduce it, then it's up to you. You want to intro it and hold for your changes?
Yes, that's correct, I will introduce it, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. I think Judy may have a question, her hand is still up.
Yeah. We have not categorized Michelle as an essential worker. I think she's pretty essential.
I think she is, but I'm not sure if she falls under essential, I don't know. Anybody else have an answer to that?
She's essential to us. I think you're talking about the definition that other folks are using versus us. She's absolutely, absolutely essential.
Not all, you know, not all essential workers, I mean, are required to come in. So there are essential workers that do work from home, I believe.
Correct.
Okay, so I will introduce it and then I'll make the amendments as we go along. Thank you all so much for your input and your questions and your suggestions and those who want to delay it, that's fine too.
I always appreciate it.
No, I love you guys.
Okay. Okay. All right, next we're on to resolutions held to the Finance Committee, Ms. Farrell's, number nine on the agenda. Under resolutions held, twenty-nine, forty-one, twenty, and that will be discussed at the Finance Committee meeting and pending that outcome, we'll move it. Any questions? So that was, that was it for the agenda.
So you have, you forgot the ordinances, Kelly, the ordinances that are on the Finance Committee agenda.
No, he said ordinance nine and ten, and Josh Love. No, I wish, did my video or audio cut out? No, I did go through them. Those are the ones you're talking about.
I thought I heard something else, I apologize.
Yes, nine and ten. You said them. Okay. All right, so again, that's it for the agenda.
So just to back that by assume, after local laws, that Mr. O'Brien is going to move to override the veto?
Right, and that was my question before to Mr. Pachardo. Right, does it occur in the consideration of the vetoes? Do we answer it there?
According to our past practice, from what I found in meetings prior, when there was a veto motion made, it happens at that time, yes.
Okay, so that's when we'll address the voting on the veto. Any other questions, comments? All right.
Hello. Hello.
I believe Councilmember O'Brien...
O'Brien may be trying to speak, yeah.
Yeah, and that's done by a simple motion, correct? A seconded motion?
Yes.
In other words, let's say council leadership wanted to make that motion instead of me, that would be perfectly appropriate, correct?
I see no issues with that.
Okay. And I received your memo, which I think is very good. I had a couple of other points I was going to raise, but I can do that on the night of the meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. JR put out a memo, which I think is right... Yeah, um, JR put out a memo, which I think is right in point. I was just going to raise a few other issues about the parts of the USDO that the mayor cited. She cited some parts of the USDO that don't apply to the, uh, changing of the ordinance. It simply apply to, um, filing a development application. So those, uh, procedural defects, uh, which the mayor cites there are not applicable because most of those sections don't even, don't even pertain to, uh, making a change to the ordinance itself. The parts that pertain to making the ordinance, to change, to amending the ordinance are, um, E twenty-four, B and C. And there's nothing in there. There's, in fact, C is, uh, C is very, twenty-four, East twenty-four, C is very explicit that the, uh, make a change, writing or amending the USDO is committed to the legislative discretion of the common council. That's very specific. So that totally contradicts her citation of it. And then the other one, E twenty-four B, it takes a rather stretched reading to say that the council has to be, uh, has to submit. I mean, as a courtesy, we normally do. But the way it reads is if, if a, if a citizen, a company or an agency of the City of Albany want to request a change to the USDO, they have to go through the planning director. And that paragraph says it's either through the, either through the planning director, receiving requests from those departments, or by the common council. And I think that they try and have the or, uh, added, uh, to the council as it's, as though it's one of, as though it's a city agency, uh, as though it's one of those other listed city agencies, which it is not. So, uh, I can make that point, uh, uh, and I, and I think that's one of the most relevant things because that affects our, that'll affect in perpetuity, our ability to change, uh, anything in the, uh, USDO as, as we feel some changes do need to be made. If we go back to this very stretched reading that, uh, we can only do so if the planning director and the planning board verbatim approve what we want. That clearly contradicts the city charter, it contradicts, uh, other parts of state law and it contradicts all, if, except for one little fractured interpretation of where the comma was. It contradicts all of the rest of the USDO. And again, I say, I don't even know, I don't know who's advising the mayor here because I don't think she really realizes that she's citing parts of the USDO that pertain only to development applications, not to making changes to the USDO itself.
Can I touch on that point a little bit, Mike? Because I agree, I agree with you if those provisions do not apply to us, we kind of allowed it. But there are, you know, when you cannot, um, affect the powers of an elected official, except by a certain process. The USDO was adopted by ordinance, um, which cannot, you know, affect or place limitations on our powers as elected officials to be making the policymaking body of, of government and to enact and amend city code. If you wanted to do that, I believe you would, it would have to go via local law pursuant to the municipal home rule law. And then that would be, require a permissive referendum because you're now placing a limitation on our, uh, legislative authority, which you cannot. So I don't think, the USDO does not, and the way it was adopted, cannot preempt our authority or put an appointed official of the mayor, give that person authority over our role. And that's in effect what they're saying. So I think.
Yes, they've been arguing this.
That's, that's what's happening. And I think we haven't really paid attention to that, but I don't think those provisions really do. And we have, in a sense, complying with them, but I don't think that they really do apply to us.
I don't think they apply to us too, except that it's a courtesy to send it to the planning board. But that doesn't give them veto power or in any way diminish what the charter, state law and the USDO itself gives us. And maybe that, I mean, uh, the mayor says, oh, an Article seventy-eight would be very expensive. I'm not sure why. Because she has a team of lawyers, but I think an Article seventy-eight would thoroughly look at that issue and basically say, no, it's not fatally defective. The city council did their courtesy referral, but they never seceded any of their authority pursuant to the charter and pursuant to nine, pursuant to the USDO itself. Uh, that interpretation is based on a, where a comma is in a, in a sentence and it's contradicted by the very next paragraph. So, um, maybe we need a judicial interpretation to restore our rights, uh, to, uh, amend the USDO.
Yeah. And, uh.
So.
So.
Oh, sorry. I just have a quick question. Oh, sorry. Yeah, um, one.
In the past, didn't the mayor make an executive order as it relates to like marijuana dispensaries to have five hundred foot step back?
Yeah, that was passed, uh, I believe as part of the USDO, but it was something that she actually had to sign off on and she did, which is something which also puzzles me because then what's the constitutional violation? And she says that, um, this setting, uh, a space, you know, a boundary limitation, uh, is unconstitutional and is a dangerous precedent that will negatively affect future investment and development, to which I asked the question, boundaries already exist in the USDO, i.e. the marijuana dispensaries. And I have heard no attribution of negative effect from those or unconstitutional effect. So I am just mystified, um, who she's getting her advice from and, um, you know, the points that, uh, and, and JR lays out the other ones beautifully. I mean, uh, the case law that's cited is not in point. And on the conflict of interest, uh, you know, I'm, I can assure you that neither me nor any of the five other petitioners had any sort of financial interest whatsoever in either Mr. Niagara, Hanford Plaza, CSL, their competitors, whatever. And our only interest was the fact that we live in Albany and felt under the, uh, under the whole, uh, uh, twenty thirty plan that we had a certain, uh, interest in maintaining certain qualities of life in Albany and, uh, and, and the other point too, which I think has gotten fuzzy in the argument is I know when Marissa submitted her, uh, uh, memo to us at four thirty on the day we were voting on the resolution, she, uh, was arguing that, uh, I was authoring the ordinance to enhance my lawsuit. And, uh, in fact, the, the ordinance was authored long before the lawsuit. And in fact, the whole subject had been on our plate for three years. And in fact, the original, uh, submission that, uh, Chris Spencer gave us in two thousand seventeen had the same thousand foot separation, which is in our, our ordinance. Uh, so that just didn't make sense. I mean, it seems to me they were shooting from the hip with confusing fact as well as law. So, um, oh, and, and the other point is the mayor says there's only a handful of sites they can go to. Well, the planning department said there are a hundred and six sites throughout the city and that sounds like more than a handful to me.
Speaking of the lawsuit aspect of it, speaking of the lawsuit, who, I'm kind of concerned. Okay, so Corporation Council essentially agrees with the company and they're the ones that are going to represent us in court. It's, it's interesting. How's that going to play out, you know, so?
You know, you know, I gotta say something which I thought was unusual. Um, the first accusations of me acting in any way that was a conflict or improper came from a letter from the attorney for the, uh, for the applicants. And then it was quickly adopted into statements that were made by Corporation Council. Unusual, uh, as well as the fact that I can assure you, and if it does go to, as JR says, it can only be interpreted in a court of law, uh, because each case differs case by case. I have no fear going in front of an Article seventy-eight court and I feel quite confident that they would say neither me nor the five other petitioners were acting out of any conflict.
Yeah.
And I might also add, I think there are provisions under the Public Officer's Law. If somebody feels a public officer is in conflict, there are avenues to be addressed through, through that. But, uh, I haven't seen that undertaken.
Okay, uh, thank, thank you, Michael. So for, for, uh, this, the USDO and the interpretation there, so would it not be easier to legislatively correct and change that?
I think we can make it clear as a bell. I think we can take that one.
So we'll have to work on that.
I think we can take the one paragraph that they're most relying on, um, and make it clear as a, that's, uh, three seventy-five dash five, E twenty-four B. That's where the placement of a comma is argued to mean that, oh no, the common council was meant to be the same as the city agencies that have to apply to the planning director, which is contradicted by the very next paragraph. But, uh, yeah, I think we can put some other language in there to affirmatively disabuse any reader that that was the, the intent.
Okay, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, um, and we'll, uh, deal with this on Monday. I, I mean, I'll make the motion, so.
I think that would be very good, yes.
You to, to, uh, work out the language.
Yeah, and maybe, um, I'm, I would ask Jenny if she'd be willing to make the second.
Absolutely. Uh, anything, anything needed, we'd be honored to.
Okay.
Councilmember Baller has his hand up.
Okay.
I just think it's a good time now to try to, uh, work out if there's anyone that has any additional questions about this, any members, if they have any additional questions about this since, you know, the last time we spoke about it. I think now's a good time to try to address any of those questions if we can.
Hey, any, any, any questions or comments? Anyone unclear or? Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll move on.
Okay.
Uh, no hands. Okay, so, uh, on to, um, often, you know, we're off of the, the agenda and on to, um, our, uh, leadership discussions. We, uh, we, we, we had a meeting with the mayor and went through, uh, some of the budget issues of discussion of the, you know, the shortfall, the shortage was seventeen to twenty million dollars and, and, uh, and, uh, she identified some steps they were taking, including cuts, uh, freezes on spending and services, uh, being eliminated. So we all get the benefit of Jenny's expertise. Um, will you lead and go through those items for us, Jenny?
Uh, yes, and, um, a- absolutely. And, uh, I would say expertise is loosely here, but, um, I take good notes. So unfortunately, we do have plenty of people with expertise that can help out too. Um, so as everyone remembers, I'm sure that, um, right now, so this, what the city's looking at, um, basing all of its numbers on is a seventeen million dollar revenue loss. Um, so that is something that could potentially hit, um, the next state, state payment is June first. So that is, um, a date that they're looking at as a potential hit. The, uh, they're expecting a relevant, revenue loss in, um, both the capital city funding and in the AFR municipality, also called AIM funding. Um, we're not expecting it in nineteen A, uh, which is the Empire State Plaza payment because that's statutory. Um, but they're expecting a twenty percent drop in state aid in the other two places. They've been going through every single department, um, every line to review budgets. There is, so it's, it hasn't, some municipalities are looking at it as a straight cut to every department. Um, the mayor's office has chosen not to do that because, uh, it depends on different part, uh, departments, what their functions will be. Um, so when we look at, um, the, uh, they've identified potential layoffs and cuts to make. Um, and they've identified some buckets of savings. Um, and this was something that, um, Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Conti brought up um, in terms of looking at those, um, kind of buckets of savings, so difference in expenditures. So for example, gas prices are down, so they're expecting, um, less to paying gas, uh, snow removal. They're expecting that to be down. And they're kind of looking within each department, tiered savings and pools. Um, the potential layoff is fifty-five to seventy-five, depending on the salaries. And it is with, different within each department. There's not, they didn't give us a full layout of what's happening in each department. And, um, we did say that we would, since we're having Mike Wheeler, um, and Darius be at the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, um, we did expect to speak a lot more on those things there. And they said that they would be able to articulate things better there. Um, but there are a lot of unknowns still.
Jenny, Jenny, when you say fifty-five to seventy-five, you're talking about fifty-five to seventy-five employees being labeled.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
And could you also clarify how they're coming up with a twenty percent? Is that directly from the governor's office?
Um, it's, I don't think the governor's office has given a definite number, but there's been an indication to expect about that much. Um, that I think every, every office that, uh, we get revenue from, whether it's, uh, state aid or even the county, is giving a range. And, and I, I mean, realistically, New York State doesn't know either. I think they're still holding out hope for, um, federal money, which, um, I don't know how realistic that is, but, um, that, that's where we are right now.
I think the twenty percent, sorry to cut you off, Jenny, the twenty percent is coming from the Medicaid cuts. They have put that out, that number out there, just to, for clarification, twenty percent to Medicaid cuts. The, the governor's office. I think that's where the number twenty percent is coming from. The people here.
So the, they also have said, so as they're going through department to department, um, the different monetary numbers, um, can't be unfilled positions that's already been factored into the savings. So they're leaving every position vacant with the exception of police and fire. So there's a class of eight firefighters, um, that they are moving forward with. Um, if they did not move forward with that class of eight firefighters, then we actually would take a budget hit because of overtime. There's also, they're still anticipating a class of, for police of thirty at the end of June. Um, and that they're planning on moving forward with that, um, mainly because we're down on so deeply in police right now anyway. Um, with the different, um, retirements that are up, um, we could potentially be down, uh, seventy-three officers if they don't move forward with this class of thirty. So I think that that's, um, I, I, I know on the council, that's something that everybody's been very aware of and has discussed a great deal. So, um, I, I think that's something that I personally am glad that we're moving forward with it. And I'm, I'm, I shouldn't mean that a lot of councilmen feel the same.
Can I ask a question on, on that? Because I saw someplace, I don't know, um, maybe it was from Greg McGee, that there was going, they were going to reduce the class they were taking in.
They were going, it was going to be a class of forty.
Right.
So it's going to be a class of thirty.
And that potentially with, with retirements that we could anticipate later, that if you reduce the class, then you bring them on, but with retirements, that we can just be back to where we are basically holding at fifty vacancies.
I don't know the nuance of where we. I don't know the nuance of where we, with those numbers. I think that that's something that we should discuss tomorrow night with the, with the exact, we're still going to be in a tough spot, absolutely. I, I mean, it's, you're absolutely right if, um, exactly what those numbers will be. I don't think that they know, because I don't think that they know exactly who's going to be retiring. They're just looking at who's eligible for retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's thirty, thirty-eight officers in the queue, I believe, right now that are eligible. And if, I mean, if they left, we'd, we'd uh, we'd have some issues. But the likelihood of that happening, you know, with everything going on, isn't very high, so. But never say never.
Has his hand up.
All right. I just want to, you know, I mean, don't want to be in a worse position than we are now.
Right.
Understanding where we are, but.
How many? I want to echo, I'm sorry, no, I, I.
Go ahead, I'll find out.
Firemen are eligible to retire?
Uh, I don't know, we didn't get into specifics for numbers for um, police or fire, other than what their classes are.
Very concerned seeing six fires in three days last week.
Yeah.
That's just another big wake-up call, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I wonder if there was just, if there's been a spurt.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that fire hiring is set for September.
Yeah, and I want to echo what, what you're saying. Uh, my concern is having a smaller class than what we currently need. I think the current need is fifty, but you have a class of thirty, you're already starting by the time they get on the field. And that's if you're assuming all thirty will, will finish. You have to assume that at least five to seven won't finish the grooming process. So you go from thirty to, let's say we're lucky, twenty-five, but you were originally down fifty, so you're still down twenty-five. And let's add another ten people who retired in that timeframe, so now you're down thirty-five officers. Where if you have a class of forty or a class of fifty, we would totally be a class of fifty. You know now all fifty are going to finish, you're going to probably only go with forty. But then that means you're down less in six months. And it's, you know, our fire department, our police department, there's a six-month, you know, lay between the time they, they accept the job and accept the responsibilities and the time they're on the field and they're on duty. And in that time, you lose more people. So, I mean, I know, and I'm looking forward to this conversation, because I really.
Yeah, I, I'm, so we don't have the, the, but completely noted. And I um, I definitely let leadership, that, let the mayor's office know and the mayor know that, um, because there, it, right now, it is difficult, you're cutting to look at hiring somewhere else. And I said that um, the voice of the council has always been consistent to make sure that we have a police, a full police cohort um, and fire cohort, safety is hugely important across the city. Um, I know my constituents, um, when it comes to making sure that we have police and fire um, and well-trained uh, police and fire, um, it's, they, they, it matters to them. And they understand how important that is. So um, I think that it's definitely important to reiterate that tomorrow, um, when we talk with uh, people from the mayor's office.
Yeah, I wanted to jump in. Um, the governor, several times in his PowerPoint slides, has said he's going to do a twenty percent cut to education, to local governments and to uh, medical or, you know, the hospital system. So, I mean, he's been kind of laying that out. Um, something, the House did pass a bill out today or yesterday, um, three trillion dollars. One trillion is supposed to be for uh, states and cities. So, you know, hopefully we can get that um, money. But I have a question, uh, Jenny, they did lay off all the uh, traffic, uh, I'm sorry, the crossing guards.
Yes.
About forty of them, is that included in the fifty-five to seventy-five number, or is that in addition to?
I don't know if that's included or not, that's a good question. Um, and that's, uh, it may be included, but I, I'm not sure it actually would be, because the number of crossing guards is actually a pretty high number, so. Um, but we should ask that uh, tomorrow, I'll, I'll make a note of that too. Um, so they are uh, looking at these as temporary layoffs. The goal is to um, push for state and federal aid. And um, in fact, the mayor um, asked for us to reach out to um, the president and Mitch McConnell as much as possible. Um, there is a letter that's going around that people can um, consider signing on to if you've not already. Um, so those are important things. Um, I personally don't know how much Mitch McConnell cares what we think. I feel like it's, um, I've compared it to.
Oh, but President Trump does.
You're right, yeah, I, I feel like it's kind of like a reach out to Voldemort, but um, that's,
Yes.
Uh, it, it's still, um, anything that we can do. Um, so the longer we wait for the layoffs, the mayor's office said, the um, the more that it's likely to have to cut. So they are, uh, the layoffs could potentially hurt, uh, hit as soon as June first. Um, which is one of the reasons why we did ask for a stronger discussion tomorrow at the Finance Committee meeting on exactly what we're looking at, so we can really articulate it for um, our constituents and people that are reaching out to us.
Mr. Robinson had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, so uh, in the meetings, were there any uh, plans, um, that is, especially plans in place to rehire? Have protections on uh, employees who were laid off to make sure that they are rehired into those same positions?
There wasn't any specific plan of a layup of saying that we're doing this, but they did. Um, and I think that that's also a worthwhile question to ask. It's about, like, is there going to be um, something in writing to say that we will be um, hiring them back if we get the funding in place? Um, but I, the intent is to look at them as temporary layoffs. And uh, the mayor was very clear on that, that the intent is to hire them back. But um, it's, uh, Jamelle, you have an excellent point that um, we can have the best intentions in the world, but without things in writing, it doesn't necessarily mean anything.
Just a little side, there are some protections in the civil service law. I don't know such, but I'm aware of that, so just wanted to put that there's some statutory stuff about it too.
Yeah, but not all of these employees will be civil service employees.
Yeah.
So, but the excellent point, thank you, Jer. Um, so the uh, and just some of the savings, when um, we kind of dug into some of the savings as um, from COVID, that um, councilmembers Robinson and Conti brought up, um, the FEMA reimbursements, um, the no special events, which is kind of sad, also means not a lot of overtime for our police officers. Um, there.
Also means that our Office of Special Events isn't being funded.
Right. I, there's, yeah, there's all sides to this. Um, there's no people out at the fire department for paramedic schools, so there's less overtime for that. Um, and they, there's also, um, they're continuing to actively look for opportunities to keep all staff employed. Um, so there, you know, there's a potential pilot program on job sharing in the area that they're, they're actively looking at. Um, and anything that comes up that can save jobs, they said that they are actively um, willing to participate with and um, be part of. So, um, it's a, uh, it, it's, if, oh, yeah, so we're soon.
Oh, wow, that was, how did you?
It's nice, I see, I have everybody's, like, Brady Bunch pieces up, so.
Gotcha, that was pretty fast. That was pretty fast. Um, have the administration or even the Budget Office thought about any type of shared service with the county?
I think that apps, like, they're looking at everything, but that's an excellent question to ask tomorrow, to ask for any specifics on it. Um, I know that um, over the past, um, there's been a lot of discussions of services over, with the county. Um, the uh, but, and I know that we do do some of them, but exactly what we do, and if it makes sense to do more of them now, um, those are great questions to um, to see exactly what is happening.
Do you know if, and maybe this is a tomorrow, one, one thing would be, I mean, are we looking at these as one time? Obviously, um, opening up and getting the economy back on is not going to happen overnight. It's going to be a slow process, so we're going to maybe for a couple of years, see these challenges as far as uh, revenues and how long it's going to take to really get things back up to where they were. Especially in the sales tax area.
Yep. Um, it, it was, um, I think that, I think that they would probably answer that there's a lot of unknowns, but with that, um, there is looking, they, they're definitely looking at the budget next year, when they're making some of these cuts and um, anticipating that next year's budget will be a very difficult one. Um, so I, 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 I think that's definitely the case. But again, another excellent question to actually ask the people uh, that are in those positions, see exactly what they would say to that. Um, but I, I really, from the different things that they've indicated, I think that um, they're expecting it to not be a quick fix, but likely to next year, too.
Have they said anything about uh, landfill income?
No, they did not, and that, that would be another good one to, because.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking about the landfill from a couple of perspectives. In a sense, you might assume that commercial dumping is going down because there's less activity. Um, but I'm also wondering, you know, with a lot of the, you know, takeout now, um, and more people having more disposables at home, and now that going into our home trash, you might say in a lot of ways. Wondering if there's these impacts that um, we are measuring more, or if we can even measure, I don't know if that, that's an impact or not. But it's sort of like, we might see less revenue, but we might see more household trash going in, in some respects, that could affect the life of the landfill.
And I, I mean, Richard, just to.
I'm just thinking, thinking this through, and I'm just trying to, trying to figure out.
I don't know if you guys remember, but not in this past leadership meeting, but I mentioned it. Um, it was just mentioned briefly in our leadership meeting two times ago. But one of the things that they were tossing out there, I mean, it was a lot of different thing, you know? Um, but was potentially no recycling. So that was.
I think.
Absolutely.
We are, we are paying still to take away those recyclables.
Yes.
Does it make, I think some municipalities have looked at that, does it make sense just to, you know, dump them in the landfill and avoid the expensive disposal if we're not making any money off of it? Or maybe to streamline what we recycle, so that we only focus on those recyclables that might have a commercial value? Um, if there are any, rather than doing the whole massive, single stream thing that we do right now.
Uh, Councilman O'Brien has something.
Yeah, uh, my uh, my understanding is if they were to throw recyclables into the landfill, that's a permit violation. D E C could potentially cut the landfill down, because uh.
We should definitely mention that tomorrow, I think.
Yeah.
That's something they're toying around with, it should be.
And, but we can determine what we, what we require to be placed curbside as recyclable. And I don't know that.
Well, I don't know, uh, paper, glass, metal, and a missing one.
Yeah.
Plastic, uh, that's the definition of recyclable.
The code actually lays out pretty specifically what the city considers to be recyclables. Um, and I don't have that definition pull-up right in front of me at the moment, but.
Right, but the question is how much of that is state mandate versus what we have flexibility?
Yeah. The, the state definition is a little broader, um, with regard to, we sort of separated, i.e. recyclables. Um, the state definition takes into account whether there's a market um, for particular items, if they can be, before they can be considered recyclable, there's, the city definition does not make that distinction. It just, it, it doesn't have a marketability factor.
How much, do you know how much we are paying for recyclables? We haven't had, the mayor has a task force that used to meet monthly or bimonthly, and it hasn't met in about five or six months now. And that's when we get the reports on all the things from Joe Glebelhaus, how much it cost us. And it was, I forget how much they said at the last meeting. Um, I don't know, it was, I think something like about fifty bucks a ton to get rid of recyclables. We used to get paid for them.
It actually, he, he actually had said essentially, it was costing us essentially about what we are charging others for, for that, uh, you, when they dump. So I think it's something like ninety-five dollars per ton, um, is what you're paying for our recyclables. Um, Jenny, I, I, are you anticipating that Darius or Mike will have any PowerPoint presentation or other materials? I'd like to get those in advance if, uh, of the meeting, if possible.
Requested to get any materials in advance, um, as you know, that we'll see what happens. I don't know if they're planning on doing a PowerPoint or not. A lot of this information, um, when we said that we wanted to discuss it um, and wanted to discuss it by tomorrow for the Finance Committee meeting, I think that that kind of moved up their timetable a bit. So, um, but I, um, I will relay that and um, I hopefully, I make no promises though.
I also want to encourage councilmembers to have the twenty-twenty budget handy, you know, as we're talking about these things, to, you know, talk about those cuts and look at, especially look at the revenue page. Uh, where we're going to, you know, be seeing hits uh, in particular. And then, you know, where, where do we, you know, it, I, I mean, I'm glad that she's asking the department heads to, you know, to figure out things. To some extent, um, some people have not been identified as essential employees. Um, and her notice every week to uh, all city employees mentions that there are these people, you know, that are, you know, we appreciate everybody, and, and then she reminds people that um, if you are not an essential employee and not working out of your home, um, you are still on call uh, at this point. So that appears that there are some people who are not providing a function for the city at this particular point in time. I don't know how many people, there might be like that, um, but apparently there are some.
Um, I, yeah, and a reminder that the um, budget is on the um, the website, so available there. Uh, councilmember Frederick, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just curious, I may have missed this, but was, was there any discussion about um, pay cuts um, in addition to the layoffs?
Um, I, I think a lot of, there was, I think a lot of the details we'll get tomorrow in the um, in the update. So it's um, there, I, I think they're still figuring it out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, um, and I, I think that it's definitely something that is on the table. Um, they've mentioned uh, different, a lot of different possibilities. Um, so, and the problem is, right now, there's so many unknowns. Um, council, uh, Kelly should be, potentially go into executive session?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? So yeah, so right, right now, I'll make the motion to.
Would this be, would this be the last item we're discussing for tonight?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so if there's any, actually, I should say, if there's any questions that anybody has, um, for this, again, we'll be discussing everything in detail tomorrow night. All of this is very much up in the air. Um, and uh, so there's. And so there's I think we'll get more answers tomorrow night and it's hard.
And again, yeah, this this is its worst case scenario. Kathy, did you have something?
Yes, thanks, Kelly. I wanted to give a quick update about the CCA advisory committee. Alfredo and I met with the committee on Friday and also mega energy was there. Because of because of the COVID nineteen, there's been quite a bit of volatility in the commodity market. And prices for electricity right now by the utility are, you know, it's a fifteen-year historical low. So what we're faced with is going out for a bid for a one or two-year contract. And it's very unlikely that we'll get a price that's gonna beat this this atypical price that we're currently getting from the utility. So there's a lot of discussion about this and I think they're going to look at prices, try to get an idea of what some of the prices might be within the next few weeks. Before there's any decision for going out. And and just to be really clear on this, you know, the concern is that we want to offer residents of Albany a price that's lower than what they get from the utility. So that's, and we also want that green energy. So I just wanted to assure everybody that that's something that every, every member of that advisory committee is pretty much on board that that's what we're looking for. So there have been delays as a result. Remember that there's a a process here, they go out to bid, they get the price the next month. There's a a two-month education period after that. Then there's another, then they get the opt-out letter, there's a thirty-day period. People have to respond and then, you know, the CCA wouldn't go into effect for, it's for four months. It wouldn't go into effect for four months. So for example, if we let's say, if we got, if we went out to bid in May, we would vote on it in June. And we wouldn't, it wouldn't start till October. But if we if we shifted it back a little bit until the the volatility in the in the market lessened, that process might get moved back a little bit or forward a little bit. So it's a little confusing, but, you know, Alfredo, you might want to weigh in a little bit on this. I think he's gone.
Yes, no, I'm here, I'm here. I I think what I got out of eating more than anything is that we really do need to try to push for a guarantee. Because it's the fact that, the fact that we would have a projection based on what future prices are. You know, it's hard to predict. But right now, we would not, right now would not be a good time, because any projection that we would get would be looking at numbers from now and two years into the future, which is higher than what people are paying now. So it would make no sense to do that now, because we would be lacking people into higher rates. Which is more reason why I'm gonna emphasize the guarantee, because two months ago we were locked in, rates were low two months ago. They were very low two months ago. But we've seen what happens, that they're even lower now.
This is a very unusual time, you know, with the pandemic.
But everyone, I, everyone was in agreement that if we do this, we're doing this to go green. And that's the, you know, that's the the main reason for doing this, is to go green and I agree with that, if we if we do this. But I also think, as everybody knows, I hope we can get that guarantee as part of it.
And, you know, we'll let you know, we did not we'll let you know the next date of the next meeting, so that if anybody else wants to participate at all, you'll be able to.
That's it. I think Councilmember Nani has a question.
It's not a question, just more so just observation. Earlier today, I found out that the city school district is going to lay off potentially over two hundred staffers. And I just wanted to bring it to people's attention that they are meeting on May fourteenth for a board meeting. So if you have any suggestions or any recommendation, you might want to attend that board meeting. Me personally, I think that when the students come back, they're gonna need more support than ever. So I just wanted to put it out there that May fourteenth is gonna be a discussion as relates to decisions with the school district. But right now
Any input, it has to be emailed into the board members by, I think, two or four o'clock tomorrow. So because they're they're voting tomorrow. So they had a meeting last night on it. And that kind of outlined the budget that they're going to be voting on tomorrow. So I tomorrow is definitely important to watch if you're interested in it. But if you're interested in weighing into it, then I recommend looking at the past information and sending any, anything along. So with that, can we go into executive session? I really, I don't want to lose anybody else. It's a pretty important discussion.
So everybody sat, can y'all hear me? Alright, so I'll make a motion to enter executive session and to address, discuss a personnel matter.
Second, by the time we, so we need a, we need a majority vote, so I guess all in favor. Looks like everybody's in it. So give me a second, everybody, while I make adjustments.
Need to expand my legislation, the council members.
We're back live and live streaming on Facebook.
Yep.
Thanks, Dana.
I got a fast question I just wanted to bring up. Is everybody else getting the emails about the pause and the COVID from some group?
Yeah.
Yeah. They said they belong, you know, I represent them, but when I looked up the addresses, some of them aren't even
They're fake, those are fake people.
And it doesn't even make sense. I mean, there's something where it's like, it's it's similar to like when people put a Facebook note up, like I do not give Facebook permission for blah, 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 blah. And you're like, that does nothing. I've been ignoring them.
Yeah, they're they're fake people.
I usually check my ward, if they're in my ward, I would not ignore it, obviously, but they're, none of them are in my ward.
Don't even know how to put down fake Okay, okay, so, so we're we're back in the caucus meeting, returning from executive session. And at this point, we have nothing further to discuss, so. Mr. Bowering.
I just wanted to say one thing. I don't know if it's been noted before, but I wanted to thank our staff that worked really hard these last few months to keep us in compliance. And it was nice to see the report about city council being rated A for being
Oh, yes, for open meetings.
And that was done because of the staff who worked hard, figured this all out and kept us in compliance, kept us transparent. So I want to let you guys know, we all appreciate that.
Okay, if no one has anything else, motion to adjourn the caucus.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor. Everybody be safe.
Have a good night, everybody. Alright, I'm leaving.